Good evening.
I call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission. And as a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the website wwwminnehahacounty.org for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, March 5th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, March 20th at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. Action taken on the rezoning applications tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the county commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, March 20th at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the county commission are also held in this same room, and the decision of the county commission will be final. At this time, we are going to consider number one, which is the approval of the minutes of January 22nd.
Yes.
Kevin?
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. I just was coming up to bring up that we do have an item that staff would like to remove out of the minutes. Prior to the meeting on January 22nd, the petitioner for conditional use permit 1806 requested it to be removed from the agenda, and staff forgot to remove it for you guys. So, in order to kind of amend those minutes, we can then hear the item at a later date. So, upon approval of the minutes, you just would approve it with the amendment to remove conditional use permit number 1806 for a later consideration.
So move with amendment.
Second.
Okay, a motion is made in second to approve the minutes for the January 22nd with the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, the Planning Commission will consider the rest of the items on the consent agenda. And are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any of the items listed on that, which is item number two, which is a rezoning number 1802? Next, I will read all the items on, which is a rezoning 1802 to rezone from the C Commercial District to the Hopp Plan Development District. The petitioner is Don Hopp, the property owner is Don Grimm, and it's located approximately six miles east of Sioux Falls. Will the petitioner come forward?
Are we going to go through the other ones, too?
You mean the regular agenda? No.
Oh.
That's separate.
Good evening.
Your name and your address, please.
Excuse me?
Your name and address, please.
Don Hopp, I live at 304 South Fifth Avenue in Rock Rapids, Iowa, right now.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I guess I have one question. We farm out towards that area. How much concern are you with the traffic patterns or the number of accidents that happened within that, say, mile radius of that site?
I know there have been accidents, and I guess I haven't really, I don't have any concerns with that issue. I think it's something that probably needs to be addressed someday. Maybe they need to change a speed limit or something like that. Most of it, I think, is coming from the casino, and personally, I slow down every time I go by there and watch everybody coming out.
Thank you. I guess I forgot to add that if there was anybody that had any objections to this rezoning, that's in the audience at all? Okay, then we'll move forward. Any other questions in the commission?
Are you looking for a motion on this?
I will. I am.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second. Okay, motion is made in second to approve the rezoning of 1802 from C Commercial to a Plan Development District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, if you're part of the rezoning that we just approved, you are free to go. The regular agenda? Kevin?
County Planning Department again. Item number three on the regular agenda is conditional use permit number 1807 to transfer one building eligibility from the west half, southeast addition of in this section here to this nearly 40-acre section across the road. It's in the same section of number seven of Mapleton Township. This transfer has been in front of you before, and the last time it was in front of you, there was staff concerns about the ownership of the properties. As of Monday, the property, both properties have been transferred into the same name for Jason Schoenfeldt. And with all that into consideration, with this transfer being from productive land to being placed onto a former farmstead and near other residential properties, we would support the approval of this conditional use permit. I guess it's up to you, then.
You have any questions?
Any opposition?
Is there any opposition to conditional use permit 18-07?
Make a motion to allow the transfer of one building eligibility on this 1807.
Okay, motion is made in second to approve the conditional use permit 18-07 to transfer one building eligibility. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
I'm still here. Item number four is a conditional use permit to allow a Class C hog confinement, C hog CAFO, which is 960 animal units on the property legally described as south half, the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter, and that sounds right. And the 66, south 66 feet and east 660 feet, the northeast quarter, Section 18. This petition for, staff has some concerns, and I'll start with that note, that the ordinance requires that the notification be sent out to all surrounding property owners within a half-mile. And the notice, a notice was sent to all property owners within a half-mile. However, the notice in the ordinance requires the notice be sent certified mail, return receipt requested, and the return receipt was not requested as part of the mailers. So, there are several in the audience, as you can see here, that would like to be, to hear this item. However, the notice was not sent entirely to the ordinance. So, it is up to the Planning Commission to kind of weigh in on if they feel the ordinance has been met, or if they feel the good faith effort that was made would work towards, for what is being proposed. But with that said, I can go through with the staff report beyond that unless you want questions with the, this mailer notice first.
Kevin, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. You got out just in front of me. I have to abstain from this, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Paul. Let's have a discussion between the Planning Commission here about, it was the way the mailing was handled, isn't that correct, Kevin?
Correct.
Any, does this raise any questions from?
It certainly raises questions, Madam Chair, but at the same time, I wonder if, in fact, people were notified, you know, if, because without a receipt, we can't be sure, but obviously, we have a few people here, and I wonder if we might just ask a show of hands if anyone is opposed, or, you know, in other words, if only proponents are here, then it's hard to be sure if everyone got notified.
I agree. Is there any opposition to this particular conditional use permit here in the audience at all?
Well, I want some clarification, I guess. What it is, I don't know what a 960.
Okay, so you're going to have some opposition, okay. I understand that.
So, but you were informed, did you get a letter, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that seems like people did get notified.
Kevin, do you have any idea of how many people that this, I mean, how many mailings should have went out, or within that, with the ordinance, to comply with the ordinance?
So, the mailers went out to all the people on the list, and I have the receipts for a certified letter went out to all the people on the list. And what the certified letter does, from researching further onto this, is that somebody has to pick up the letter with certified mail. However, they don't sign for it, so we don't know who picks up the letter. And that's where the return receipt comes into play typically, is that somebody signs for it, so you can see that it was John Doe that signed for it and not their nephew or somebody else that was at the property at the time. So, but everybody on the list does have a mailer slip corresponding to them. According to the tracking on this, the, every letter was delivered, as I noted, it does track the delivery, it just doesn't track who picked it up.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission about how the mailing was handled?
How many was that, Kevin?
Rough, rough, sixteen.
Okay. Good.
And so, Madam Chair, so the receipt that you have there shows that probably sixteen were mailed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, one last point. Well, I think if we acknowledge that probably everyone did receive something, my only concern would be consistency, you know, any point to, let's say, turn a blind eye to this, but allow this to go, and maybe the next issue with a similarly insignificant matter does arise that might sway about differently, just a thought, I guess.
Any comment? Becky?
Yeah, my concern is that, I mean, they were all signed, they all were received, but if our ordinance requires that this is how they're sent, then I feel like we need to follow through with what the ordinance indicates. Otherwise, I think there's always that potential for challenges. I don't want to throw up barriers, but I think we have to go by what our ordinance indicates. That's my thought.
Doug, any comment?
That's my, what Becky just stated, that I would kind of want to echo the same thing. If we would let this go without having it signed, so we know it was received, and, you know, we've got to be consistent from here out, so I have a hard time going along with it as-is right now.
I agree.
Adam?
I agree with what Becky and Doug have said, so.
I guess I'm maybe on the other side, thinking that it seems evident that the intent of the ordinance has been followed, and that people did get their notification, and I worry about the idea of holding up, you know, a project that requires, you know, engineering and construction and financing and all these things going on, and that's my concern. It seems to me that there's also the opportunity for, you know, appeal if someone feels that they want to block the project, they could appeal to the county commission, and we would hear it at that level.
Okay, I guess I'll give my opinion. I tend to agree that an ordinance is kind of like the law, and I have a real hard time if somebody doesn't apply with the law, and then we have another case scenario that we let somebody slide, and the next one, have we set a precedent here? Yeah, we kind of have. It's kind of like with safety, you know, it's, I understand that, you know, it might slow up a little bit of the process, sure, but I think it's also important that people are aware of what happens around them. And, you know, that's also, that's also a good gesture for them to be good neighbors. In the long run, it will be for the benefit of the petitioner anyway. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Rather than the simple rejection at this point, can we make a motion to defer, to allow them to?
Turn them on, and they have to re-mail the notices correctly.
I guess for the people who did came, we could present a little bit of the information if there's any questions, then they can maybe avoid coming at the next one if they're satisfied with the, what's going on.
Okay.
If that's all right with.
Any comment from the commission?
They're here, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would think then maybe that will satisfy maybe some of their questions, if they have any. Maybe they also maybe want to talk, or, I mean, I don't know if any, the petitioner has reached out at all either. Do you have any idea if that's happened?
I guess beyond the letters, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll try to keep it brief, anyway. Above you, you can see the site map, and the location of the property is seven miles south of Humboldt along South Dakota Highway 42, and the petitioner would like to construct a swine finishing facility that would hold 2,400 head of animals, which is 960 animal And the petitioner has submitted a couple different site plans. This one is the large-scale site plan, so you can see a lot of the neighboring properties. It shows that the neighboring properties meet all required setbacks. It also shows that it meets required setbacks for, say, tributaries to streams, the property line setbacks, and that sort of thing. The close-up set property shows a little bit more of the layout, and it shows where the driveway will be utilizing an existing field approach, and that the building will meet the required setback from 50 feet from the side yard and the 50 feet from the front yard. It'll be a little over 130 feet from the front yard. And as part of these site plans items, you'll see the building is approximately 51 feet by 393 feet, and that would be the size to, it's a common size to carry this amount of animals. As noted earlier, it meets the setbacks of 50 feet from every property line. And if I can turn the page. The setback for the nearest neighbor is a quarter-mile, and they meet that quarter-mile setback. I can't read it off of that currently, I'd have to look it up in the plans, but they are well over the quarter-mile setback. The petitioner submitted, narrative also submitted a odor footprint model that's done with a South Dakota odor footprint model through SDSU. Part of the requirements to show on the site plan is landscaping or a plan to disperse The petitioner has noted in their narrative and on the site plan here that the nearest neighbors will be outside of the worst odor offenses for the area. All the petitioners are going to be outside of the 98% nuisance-free line from the operation. The site plan also shows that the grading will direct water away from the facility, and since the proposed hog barn is going to be entirely inside, no water will be flowing into the manure waste containment underneath the structure. The narrative and site plans show that there's going to be, that dead animals will be managed through a rendering truck that'll pick it up on the site, and there will be an enclosed fenced area that'll screen the animals on three sides so that the traveling public along the highway will not be able to see the animals lying on the property. The manure on the site will be contained in a pit in liquid format underneath the animals, below the barn, and it is planned to inject the manure after the fall harvest. The injection of manure should help also reduce the runoff potential from rain that may, that is concern of many. So, with that being said, this facility, without the little hiccup with the notification, would be recommended for approval, and I will quickly read through the recommended conditions so that those in the audience will be aware of what the property owner will be required to meet once the permit is approved. Condition number one, the facility shall be limited to swine confinement of the 960 animal units in size. Condition number two, the CAFO shall comply with all applicable regulations of the county zoning ordinance. Condition number three, the facility shall conform to the submitted site plans. Any minor changes may be approved by the planning director at the Minnehaha County Planning Department. Major changes will require an amendment to this permit in a public hearing. Four, the manure containment facility must be in conformance with South Dakota Department Environment and Natural Resources design standards for any newly constructed waste containment facility. A registered professional engineer shall certify the plan specifications and the construction of the facility. Number five, the proposed barn shall have an engineer-certified drawings that shall be submitted for review by the building inspector prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number six, a building permit is required for all structures prior to construction. Number seven, the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the CAFO at any times after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval in the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. And there is a few photos. Right now, you can see it's a bare field. This is looking north from the field approach. You can kind of see the transition between fields, you can see this fence line there, so the facility be right north of this site. That is looking to the northeast, that is the petitioner's farmstead in the northeast of that quarter section in the distance. This is looking east, and this would be towards what was formerly known as Union Center along the highway. And this is looking straight south, you'll see, again, the petition of the half-mile fence line. And then this would be looking to the west, and a half-mile west of here is the Moody, or, excuse me, McCook County border. So, at that, is there any questions from the Planning Commission?
Could you clarify for me the location of the driveway and the approach?
All right.
Please.
Perhaps on this map, it'll, I can show you a little bit better than on the site plan, since they turned out really dark. The field approach right now is right at this half-mile line, and that would be the driveway, and they'll be setback a little over 100 feet onto the property right here. And the farmstead is up here. The petitioner noted that this is the, one of the more advantageous places to put it for ease of access to his, his fields, so that way, when it comes time to apply manure, he can access his own property as easy as possible.
Is it a shared field approach, or?
I can't recall from visiting the site. I think it might be, maybe the petitioner would be able to tell you that.
Any other questions for Kevin? Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
May please come forward, state your name, your address, please.
Yeah, my name is Craig Lucas, and my address is 26453 455th Avenue, Humboldt, South Dakota.
You understand about the mailing that went out?
Yeah, there was, I took this letter that they gave me, and I showed them right to the postmaster, and I said, "This is what I had to have." And on this letter, it shows an example of what they wanted for the return mailer, and it says there, "You need to return the green and white slip along with the affidavit signed" that I mailed them out. So, I showed it to the postmaster. It didn't, if there was two of them on here, I'd have done the other one. I didn't do the signature card, because that wasn't showed on this paper, and that's how the mistake got made. But that's what happened. And then I did go, I went back to the postmaster and told him that, and he said, "Well, you can go online and get proof of when they got the letters." And I did that. Everybody got the letter mailed to them. And they said they could verbally tell me who signed for it, but they couldn't give me a signature.
Okay.
So, and that driveway is shared, but both fields are mine that is shared, too.
Any other questions for the commissioner, or for the petitioner?
I have one other question.
Becky?
Have you talked to the, I know it's not a very big area, but have you talked to the township at all about the increased traffic?
There won't be any increased traffic on any township road, it's on the state highway.
And that's why I had asked about the clarification of the approach.
Right.
Was that on one of the conditions related to any kind of, do we need any kind of approval from the state highway?
You would not, because it's, it's an agricultural approach, so, and it's the existing approach.
Thank you.
Have you had any contact with your neighbors that you sent the letters to?
Yeah, I did, I did with one, I didn't get a return receipt from one of them, so then I contacted him and said, "Well, did you get your letter?" And then he said, "Oh, I got it, but I never went and got it." He said, then he signed it, and then I got the receipt. Yep. And that was the neighbor that's the closest to the barn. That was Bernie Stockwell.
Well, commission, where are we?
Madam Chair, there was another fellow that had a question about the project.
Sir, would you like to come forward, state your name, and if you have a question for the petitioner?
Yeah.
I'm Bonnie Bonson, and I've, I've got an 80 in that section, just a bare ground 80. And most of my questions have been answered. And most of my questions have been answered with, you know, with the information that you've presented. I guess I wonder then, and maybe I'll just start asking some of my questions and see if they're appropriate for this hearing. But I just wonder if he's ever raised hogs before. If, you know, I'm interested in the success of the operation, so we don't have a, you know, and how big an operation is this? I mean, are we talking several million dollars, or? So, what's the risk of it being successful? Or do we end up with a hog facility that's, you know, half-built? And, and we don't have a viable operation? So, those are some things, I'm interested in where the taxes go, and how it's zoned, if it's, if, and who the partners are. If it's a normal, you know, local farmer doing his hog operation? Or is there some outside, you know, big corporation farm coming in doing this? Those are my, those are my concerns. My biggest concern is I don't see how it improves my land value, because I was worried about the odor. And I'm pretty comfortable with that, that that's not going to be a big issue with me. But I'm also concerned on, you know, I'd like to know if the taxes are going to help our school district and whether the thing's going to be a go or not. And, you know, I'd like to know if Craig's got experience in hogs and who his partners are and if he's capitalized to make the thing work, so.
Thank you. Petitioner, will you come forward again? Can you answer some of his questions?
Sure. Okay, the brother, my brother and me are the ones that are going to be owning the barn. And we'll be leasing the barn to Centerra Farms, who is a pig grower in the state of South Dakota here. So, it'll be more of a lease building, where they lease it from me and then I get the manure management on my side of it. And I use the manure for my fields.
Have you raised hogs before?
No, no, I haven't raised hogs before, no.
Will you be the manager of it, or do they have somebody already in mind that...?
They have a person that can manage it. But in the future, I'm looking to bring my son into the farming and I'm looking for, you know, more opportunity to grow.
Another quick question. Do you foresee, if you get this up, which I hope you do?
Yep.
I'll be straight up with that. Could you foresee that you may want to put additional hog units out there?
Not in that area, no, no. Maybe in McCook County, I have land over there, I could do another one over there. But that'll have enough manure for what I farm.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair, I would just comment that there's never a guarantee that anything will be, will work. I mean, the whole country could become a vegetarian next year and no one would eat meat. There's no guarantees. And, you know, on the other hand, as a county commissioner, I'm happy to see people investing in our county and creating jobs. And there will be taxes that paid to the county, paid to the township, paid to the school district. And those would be used for those purposes. It will increase the valuation and help keep everyone else's taxes lower.
I agree. That comment. Is there anyone else that might have a question for the petitioner at all? Will you come forward, sir? State your name and your address.
I'm Terry Keeter, two-six-three-two-five-four-fifty-fifth Avenue. My farm would be three-quarters of a mile north of here, of Craig's, which would put us a mile and a quarter from the unit. My son is across the road from Craig, he received the letter. My questions are only about, is this being approved for that site on that quarter only? If he wanted to move it to a different spot...
He'd have to come back.
He'd have to come back.
Okay. Because the letter shows that whole quarter identified, it shows the site plan that says where it's going to go. It's a very good spot for a hog barn. That's the best site in Minnehaw County, probably, for a hog barn. I mean, you are on a state highway, you are away from everybody. But if it was going to be allowed to be moved around that quarter, then I might have issues as I get closer to our property. But just wanting to verify that.
Yeah, that's not the case. He'd have to come back if he's going to change it.
I've known Craig since, we grew up in the same area, he's living on his family farm, I'm living on mine. If anybody's going to make this work, it's Craig. So, I just wanted to verify where it was going to go. That site, I'll reiterate again, should be a hands-down slam dunk. The only thing I would ask is the people that received the letter that are here tonight, if they could sign that they were here, received their letter, and don't have to come back, I think that would be a nice gesture on your people's part.
Nobody actually has to be here at all, except probably the applicant.
When you live out in the country and you're not home at noon, or when the mail goes by, it's quite a hassle to track down a certified letter. Okay? Because you have to go get it or sign us, you know, it just takes a little effort. So, that's all I had.
Thank you. Commission? Any other comments?
You used the one comment you have, is that I would agree that probably this is the most appropriate land use for this particular site, and would love to see this occur here. I do hate putting up roadblocks, but I think just unfortunately for our consistency, we do need to defer. But that's just my opinion.
Any other comments? Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion's made and seconded, is it deferred this till next month? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That means it'll be deferred a month. Till next month, then we'll have to bring it back. You'll have to email the letters with, make sure that you have it with a return, or certified mail with a return receipt. Sorry, but that's how it works.
And Mr. Keeter will have to sign again.
Okay. Any old business?
Yes. I just wanted to report, last Tuesday, we had the public hearing in front of the county commission for the Hope Harbor House at Crooks. And it was approved. It was about a two-hour and fifteen-minute hearing. There were a lot of, a lot of people testified for and against. The county commission approved it three to one, three in favor, one opposed. Dean Karski was the county commissioner that opposed it, so. And the last item, the last item of old business, you will notice in your packet, I sort of do a year-end report. I provided that to the city, sorry, county commission as well. And it just sort of recaps where we ended up last year in the way of numbers for conditional use permits and building permits and building inspections and all the different things that we do. And just information, if you have any questions, I can answer them, but it's pretty straightforward.
Madam Chair?
Becky? Sure.
I forgot to ask permission before. The complaints that we have, the nuisance complaints, were any of those related to CAFOs? Or were they primarily junk?
They both, well, the, are you referring to the two that we took, that we did the enforcement on?
Well, I'm just looking at the third paragraph on the second page where it says, "There were seventy-four, and then that included forty-one carryover complaints."
Yeah. Those, I couldn't tell you exactly if any of them had to do with CAFOs. And then there's a whole variety of complaints that we get. Everything from piles of junk in people's yards, overgrown grass weeds. They can be the illegal spreading of manure. It's just, it's a variety of different zoning complaints that we get. I will tell you that the two, the two that went before the county commission and were declared public nuisances, one of them was located in the village of Corson and one was located in the village of Lyons. They were both, one was a residential lot, one was a vacant lot that had junk, I mean, just stuff. So, runs the gamut of complaints.
I was just trying to get a little bit of a feel, you know, we, when we hear the CAFOs, we always have a lot of public concerns. And I'm just, was just wondering how many of those concerns come to fruition that in the form of complaints?
Maybe David, David and Kevin, David and Kevin primarily have been doing the code enforcement, so they can get up and, if they recall that, if they have a recollection of what kind of, if we had any CAFOs.
David Heinold, Planning Department. So, most of the ones that we get for us, complaints for like feedlots, animals, or like manure-based, so we take those in and then we investigate those, go out to the fields and see what's going on. I know Kevin's been out checking out what's going on as far as like injecting manure. Probably like three or four. So, maybe half a dozen at most.
Thank you.
Okay, no new business? Okay, need a motion adjourned.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.